All right, we should be live now.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is an Isle of Palms Emergency City Council Meeting. Today is Thursday, August the 13th at about 10:00 a.m. And this is a virtual meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As everybody should know, after these many, many meetings, we have accepted all kinds of comments. On our website, we have a link for it. Our agenda today is first is to call a meeting to order and to acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. And if we would call a roll call.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Dear.
Councilmember Streitman?
Here.
Councilmember Popsen?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
You have a form?
Thank you so much. The purpose of our meeting today is to discuss and consideration of a proposed ordinance amendments to Emergency Ordinance 2020-11, which extends the state of emergency, establishes time limits on parking on the island, limits live entertainment after 9:00 p.m., limits occupancy in bars and restaurants to 50%, and other emergency measures proposed for the public safety and public health of the city of Isle of Palms. I believe everyone got a three-page whereas and whereas and therefore. And what we need to do now is we have several things that are going to expire in the next few days. The biggest of which is parking, which is on Palm Boulevard expires on Sunday. But Desiree, should we start at the top and work our way down?
Sure, Mayor. I think that there is a desire to go through each section individually for discussion and consideration.
Thank you.
So I would suggest that you go through each of the sections included under therefore.
If everyone would go to page two of our list. The city of Isle of Palms temporary suspends normal operating procedure of the city of Isle of Palms meetings and hereby allows us and council members to remotely participate as we are doing now, voting in operational by telephone or other means, electronic means. We need to, I think we should probably do this all as one so we can conglomerate them all together. But let's read down each one of them and then if everyone wants to do individual votes, we can do that as or do you think we should do separate votes for each and every one of them?
Yes, that's, I think that's what we are recommending.
Okay. So the first one is electronic communication. It expires here on the 26th, if I'm not mistaken. And do I hear a motion for this to be extended out?
Motion to extend.
And a timeframe too, please.
To the max, what's the maximum period we can extend that?
60 days.
Motion to extend that, the virtual meetings for 61 days.
And that's a motion and a second. Do I hear some discussion? Mr. Streitman?
No, Mayor, I'm sorry. I raised my hand inadvertently there. We'd already made the motion in seconds.
Okay. Any other discussion? Here or none? All those in favor signify by roll call.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you so much. Moving on. Local businesses on the island are authorized to purchase, use, and distribute containers that do not comply with the city's plastic ban during the state of emergency. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just a time frame, please.
I'd like to see us extend this through October 1st with the grace period for using already existing supplies ending November 1st.
I'll second that, Susan. Yep.
Very good. Any other discussion on this?
And I'll just note that this recognizes that our original ordinance allows for the fact that if compliance is not feasible for a business establishment because of either unavailability or alternative for alternatives or economic hardship, the city council may grant a waiver to that business if they apply, if they're having hardship.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Any person on the beach will be required to maintain proper social distancing. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion?
61 days, Mayor.
This, this all kind of keep it the same thing as for number, probably the same day, so 60 days. So roll call vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan? Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance requiring individuals to wear face coverings in retail and food service establishments. Do I hear a motion to extend?
I make that motion to extend.
For how long? Same thing? Days wise? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Councilmember Ward?
Is there any appetite changing the the motion to include required prior, um, prior, um, social, proper social distancing and washing of hands instead of just recommending it?
Jimmy, I missed the first part of that. Can you restate it, please?
Yes, sir.
Currently states that, uh, the ordinance states that require face masks, but it's not requiring proper social distancing, not requiring hand, hand cleaning or a hand sanitizer. I'm just wondering if there's any appetite to require that instead of just recommend it? Just a question.
They both say required right now, right? On the beat, but we can say a friendly amendment for this to be a
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward, is that good for you?
Yes, sir.
What are we, friendly amendment?
Um, this is proper social distancing in all food establishments. Uh, face covers in retail, food service, um, any interior location, restaurants, stores, any enclosed environment. And I see Councilmember Popsen raising his hand.
Section seven, okay.
Yes, ma'am, section seven, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just go back to my, my same question I've asked before and maybe the chief can enlighten us. How, how are we going upon enforcing this mask mandate?
So the mask mandate, we've been, if we get a complaint, our typical approach to address it is to remind everybody or the individual that's not wearing the mask that they need to. We could issue citations. We've not issued any so far. We've given some people a verbal reminder that hey, you need to wear a mask. And that's all we've had to do thus far. As far as the part of the social distancing inside of the business, that would be difficult. It's already laid out in state executive order that they can only have a certain capacity. And then I think our previous emergency ordinance put that under the fire marshal to enforce the occupancy rate. Did I answer your question?
So it's hard to enforce?
It is difficult to enforce. I mean, we can. If somebody's not wearing a mask, we know they're not wearing a mask. But the reality is we've not issued any tickets. Most of the time it's a reminder of hey, you need to wear it. Or sometimes I've walked into a business where they weren't wearing them. The moment I walked in, the presence alone was enough to remind everybody you need to wear one as I watched everybody scramble for their masks.
Do we need a second on a friendly amendment?
The person who needs a second, it should be
Councilmember Ward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I think what the chief is saying is like, I believe what Councilman Ward's trying to do is is already in place. Just via state law and then some of our current ordinances always are in you know, our 50% occupancy and I think a lot of that's already in place or I think it's just going to be a duplication of it.
It doesn't, I don't think it hurts to duplicate. I think it's kind of like our cigarette ban on the beach, you know? I don't think our police department is standing there on the beach looking for people smoking. If they do see them, they'll say something to them or somebody calls, but it's as the chief says, almost virtually impossible to be out there when you've got a full-time job doing many, many, many other things. So we do the best we can in trying to enforce it. Come here. Councilmember Moy hand and then Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I fully support everything that Councilmember Ward said in terms of social distancing and hand washing. My only question is, I'm not sure exactly what we're requiring of hand washing.
But
what's the, what's the requirement that you wash your hands?
I would say, I Jimmy, I mean, the best thing to say is I would say washing your hands. I don't think everybody's walking around with a bottle of hand sanitizer. I got my props with me today. But you know, when you go into a restaurant or anywhere that has a restroom where you're going to be sitting down eating food, I would say, yes, do go wash your hands.
But
It may be, it may be too vague. You know, um, Councilmember Moy had a good point. A lot of restaurants you go into, they already have hand sanitizer. Now I see it takes some using it. So.
Okay, so like, member Smith?
I was just going to chime in in terms of it being somewhat vague if we're talking about social distancing, but it's not defined. If we want to defer to state law and reiterate, uh, you know, our support for measures around maximum capacity and and the others that the chief stated that would be more specific.
I would draw my motion. Perfect.
Okay. Very good. So back to the original motion?
Extending it out 61 days, extending number seven out 61.
Any other discussion on that then? Here or none? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you so much. Starting May 12th, 2020, all short-term rentals on the island will be subject to the safety standards and guidelines provided by the city's task force and attached here to Exhibit A, the requirements of these safety standards to expire. Do I hear a motion to extend the rental guidelines?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick, I mean, do we have to extend that if it says that they will expire upon the state of emergency in the ordinance?
Julia has a question for you. I'm sorry.
Uh, I mean, you don't have to.
Okay.
But if you want to vote to reinforce, you can certainly do that as well.
Okay.
It's already stated.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Hearing none? Nicole, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you so much. Moving on. During the duration of the emergency order, restaurants will be allowed to have outdoor seating directly outside the space of their establishment. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second, here we go. Discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
Are we breaking, because this, the whole thing says duration of emergency or um, I'm trying to read that. This is just for outdoor seating then. Okay, I got you.
Number 10.
Sir, I got it.
All right. Any other discussion? Here and then, Nicole?
Sorry. Uh, Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on. Beach parking is prohibited on Palm Boulevard all sides and from 3rd through 9th avenues. All parking lots will be reduced by 50%. Parking on Hartnett Boulevard between 27th and 29th shall be for residential recreational purposes only. Those restrictions shall be enforced 24/7 and will remain in place for 30 days, which expire this Sunday. Do I hear, and we also had some exemptions for like the Turtle Team and some employees down at the Wild Dunes Hotel. Do I hear a motion to extend or what? Do I hear a motion for parking in, yes, sir, Councilmember Ward?
Like making amendment to this. The amendment would be to open Palm Boulevard on the ocean side to parking. Keep no parking on the landward side. Open the city parking lots to 100%. Open up parking on the avenues, I believe, starting in place of 3rd through 9th. Second. And everything else, it's said, see.
Um, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A couple of things here. On the beach side of Palm, which I agree with, if we make that adjustment there on beach side only. I would also like for us to consider looking at 37th block through 39th, uh, the shoulder of that Palm Boulevard on the beach side there is completely destroyed. I mean, it's rutted, it's, uh, yeah, it'd be tough to even park there, even even though we haven't had a lot of rain recently, there's a lot of deep ruts there. And it would seem to me that it would be prudent of us to only have the parking on Palm from what, 21st Street or 21st Avenue up to 37. You know, going no further than 37. The other item I'd like to bring up is I would like to see us still extend the limited parking on avenues, the finger streets, 3 through 9. I think that's worked pretty well for us for the most part. And if we can't, if we don't have the appetite to, to just limit parking totally on 3 through 9, I would say that we at least ought to look at just one side of those finger streets for the time being.
Councilmember Ward?
Um, Councilmember Streitman, would you um, consider letting Public Works and the Police Department make that call on Palm Boulevard? About, there's a, you made a good point, but I think there's some other areas too that are in pretty bad shape.
Uh, yes, Councilman, I, I would, certainly it should be their call, I think, uh, between the Police Department, maybe Public Works or whatever. But I know that there's been some, there have been some barrier fencing this place down there, in fact, there's some down there already. Uh, I think of 38th Avenue. Not sure who put it there. I'm assuming our Public Works people did that or maybe the Police Department. And we also had some, uh, in front of the house, uh, 3704 Palm also for a while. Now that's down, that's down now, but I'm just saying that there's been a, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of traffic there. And I think all of us that go up and down Palm have seen that it's, uh, there's, there's a lot of deep ruts right there. And, uh, I just think it's wise of us to really look at that closely or else we're going to have people stuck in there. And, uh, if we have another heavy rain, it's going to be almost impossible to get in and out of that area there.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir. Councilmember Buchanan?
And I think, I, I think what we're really going to do is what Jimmy said is have the police and Public Works address it because even though it may not be, maybe it's a problem there, another problem could pop up somewhere else. And we may have to address that at that point. And I know Desiree, I'll reach out to you just for a second. I know we have contacted SCDOT to try to improve the, the, this, that infrastructure. Have they returned anything at all on when they may be able to get out here or is it something that we're going to have to take on and do ourselves?
Or we do ourselves. We have reached out to SCDOT. They have not provided a timeline on potential improvements there. But we do this. I mean, every time there's rain and these heavy ruts up here on the right of ways, we will put up fencing and some cones to avoid people parking there. So Councilmembers, we're doing that throughout the summer and we'll continue to do that. And I, I think I agree with Councilmember Buchanan that there are other areas along Palm that may, may need to be revisited. So I think that limiting, limiting it to might strengthen our ability to, um, address other areas that may also be presented as a safety hazard.
So is that one thing that we can go ahead and do instead of just popping up safety fence or what have you? Working with the Public Works Department and a vendor to stabilize those shoulders?
Councilmember Smith and then Bell?
A point of clarification, does this include 42nd to 58th Avenue?
Thank you for asking. That's going to be my question.
Okay. And then, and I'd also like to reserve a time to make a comment after we hear.
So yes, back to that question Councilmember Smith has. What I see left out is from 42nd to 57th Avenue, not 58th Avenue. And actually, you know, the construction workers, the Wild Dunes take up probably half of that, if not more. But that is part of Palm Boulevard and it's not the ocean side because of the drive sidewalk, but the non-ocean side. Desiree? Was that, um, to me, Palm Boulevard is Palm Boulevard. We allow parking from 42nd to 57th Avenue on the non-ocean side of Palm.
Yeah, the, the or, original emergency ordinance eliminated all parking on Palm Boulevard. That would include Palm Boulevard between 42nd and 41st to 57th. There wasn't exemption allowed for the contractors to have a, who show a valid proof of a business license. So, which I think is what most of the parking on that end of the island has been about.
In the Turtle Queen.
Well, I mean, do I need to make an amendment to encourage that we include parking on the from 40, 41st to 57th? To help spread things out and encourage as much social distancing as possible? I recognize that during the week that the contractors are using those spaces, but on the weekends, I know that I've, I've seen plenty of beach visitors using them.
There's no parking on the beach side already here.
I'm sorry, on the land, whatever side that we allow parking on.
Councilmember Bell? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a general question, just to follow on with Councilmember Smith's comments. There's been repeated complaints through public safety of parking along that landward side because of the the access in and out of Wild Dunes and the blocking of any visibility and the fact that it's 35 miles an hour or whatever people want to do. So I would not encourage changing anything all the way down. The, the one thing that, um, maybe we should discuss is, as an exception because we're either going to force the employees of the hotel build into Wild Dunes, which was the original intent. Their deal expired with the Citadel or Citadel didn't renew it. And Desiree, this is a question of you, do we need to make an exception on that stretch for construction? Uh, but no, I would not encourage any other parking along that area. It's problematic already because of the, the speed limits down there and it's, it's pretty wide open. We don't have traffic congestion down there when people are going to Wild Dunes. I, I had a general question to follow on. At what capacity is the city lot currently? So everybody's complaining it's not open to 100%. Are we filling up to 50% or are we, you know, shirt sleeves off the vest? We're just opening it up because because we can? Or do we have a problem? Or are we even keeping track of the parking at this point?
This is what we're, what we're here today is to resolve these issues and
Yeah, but the question is, do we have a parking problem at 50%?
Yes. Yes, we do. The, the spots inside, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, if the spots inside the city parking lot are filling up quickly, um, creating a, just a parking problem in general, but then not allowing rooms for those, those employees who have to park to find a place to park as well. So they're driving around, they're actually receiving citations. They're parking in, I mean, we're starting to get overflow into our city hall parking lots, our Public Works parking lots, especially on the weekends, but sometimes during, during the week as well.
Good, thank you.
I totally concur with Councilmember Buchanan on that. You know, not only are there people going to the beach in front of the beach, but there's also businesses down there that have zero parking. So we ought to think about the big picture. Councilmember Smith, am I seeing your hand raising?
Yes, I mean, just to respond to Councilmember Bell. I know that there have been steps that have been taken in that stretch of 42nd to 58th already to make sure that public, the beach paths that lead from Wild Dunes are not blocked and have visibility so that cars aren't parking there on the land side. And I've, I've biked down there several times during beach weekends and it, it does not seem while I will admit there is a spot at 42nd that I think we need to deal with in a down the line or sooner than later, but otherwise I feel like there is space there for people to park safely and, and get across the street.
Desiree, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought that from 41st to 42nd was no parking. Um, and then it's parking started at 42nd going down to 57th. Am I correct?
Yes, it's a section between 41st and 42nd. It's no parking on both sides because of the
Yeah. Honestly, the, the trouble spot is just at 42nd crossing the street period. I don't think it really has to do with parking necessarily.
So Councilmember Smith, would you like to ask Councilmember Ward for a friendly amendment or would you like to do an amendment motion?
A friendly amendment if Councilmember Ward is amenable to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Who seconded?
Hey, the statement before me is, or you're asking to have parking on the land side of 42nd to 57th of Palm?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
And who made the second, John?
I did.
Thank you. Okay. Um, and we've, we decided the parking lots in front of the beach will be at 100%. Councilmember Pounds and then
Mayor, I think John had his hand up. I think John was John, go ahead if you want to.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Pounds. A comment on the, the city lot. I am of the persuasion that we should keep it at 50%, but I would like to acknowledge if we're addressing a problem of employee parking, then I'd like to address that as well. I, I don't, I don't think opening up to 100% is the right move. We're still in the midst of the pandemic and I fully support opening up ocean side of Palm. So if, I guess my, at first is a question, if the reason rationale is opening from 50% to 100 is to help employees, um, first of all, and if so, then I'll make a comment after that. So I'll wait for, um, Councilmember Ward or Buchanan to
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, I don't know if everybody's received comments from our front beach businesses and our businesses. I mean, we've had places who've lost revenue due to parking upwards of 60%. And I've reached out to basically every single one of them. And their, and their number one problem is parking and their complaints from their, their patrons is they, they don't, their patrons don't have a place to park. They, they can't get in there. So it's not just employee parking, but it's, it is front beach business parking as well. Not, not just folks going to the beach, you know, or whatever. It's front beach, folks going to the front beach to try to go to, to support our local businesses. And if they don't have a place to park, they're not going.
Okay. John, does that answer your question?
Um, it does. And obviously, you know, in this time when businesses are hurting as it is already, we don't want to do anything to further compound that. I'm, I'm, I'm still, I, I have concerns with the, we heard, you know, we know from our, our experts that the, the most troublesome places for spread are indoor. And I, I hope that their, their patrons are, you know, largely eating in their outdoor dining options and largely doing takeout. We know they have got fifty percent capacity. So we kind of assume that's, that's the case. So I don't, I don't have necessarily the answer. I, I just feel like right now we know that that is where the spread is most concentrated. That the indoor, people who are eating and, eating and dining and sitting in one place for a long period of time indoors. And so I would say, you know, hopefully what we're doing on the ocean side will open up some of the beach parking and that will open up for the patrons. But I, I would say we should take an incremental approach here and that I would, I, I guess this would not be a friendly amendment. Probably this would be a full fledged amendment that we were, that we moved from one hundred percent to fifty percent parking at the city lot.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We, we, we have several issues on the table right now and we're wondering the best way to proceed.
Well, right now, this was part of our grand scheme of things on the parking lots down here. So if we separate this totally from it, we can separate this totally from it. Desiree, can we do this?
Separate the discussion about the beach parking from the discussion of the municipal parking lot?
Municipal parking lots from the rest of the motions that we've made so far.
I think so. I, I think it would be helpful if Nicole would read.
Councilmember Ward's original motion to amend section twelve was to open Palm Boulevard on the ocean side, no parking on the land side. Open the municipal lots to one hundred percent and to open the finger streets, adding a friendly amendment allowing for parking on the land side of Palm from forty second to fifty seventh.
We're, we're running the risk of the, just what councilmember Smith brought up the last time, when we have things in there that are very specific individual items that we might disagree with. Then we vote no on the whole thing when the majority of it we agree with. I think the idea of friendly amendments, there, there are things I broadly agree with. There are things I disagree with and I don't personally want to be placed in a position of voting no against the broader issues because of friendly amendments or singular items. I, I just, I think that's a bad route to go because it might get us nowhere, frankly.
Okay, councilmember Smith?
And in that case, you know, if we want to go back, I'm fine with making an amendment specific to forty second to fifty eighth.
Well, the parking is, is the most critical thing that we're tackling today. Everything else, I think people are really working towards trying to do social distancing, proper hand washing, CDC guidelines. And so really I think we need to tackle this parking and I think we need to, I think we should do it together. And, and if we have to break it up into individual partials, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, but we need to tackle this today.
Agreed.
Okay, so do we want to break it up into, and councilmember Pounds, I see your hand going up a couple of times. I'm not sure if that's, you just wait.
It was queued up. Go ahead, finish your comment, then I'll have a comment for you.
Okay. So do we want to break it up into individual partials on, on parking? I don't think I'm hearing anybody.
Would think that'd be the cleanest thing to do. Yeah.
Okay, so let's do this. Yes, sir. Councilmember Streetman.
Yeah, just, I just want to revisit the comment I made on top of council, councilmember Ward's original motion in regards to the finger streets, three through nine. I mean, I don't, I don't want this to be an issue for the overall broader parking issue that we're looking at, but I do want to know if we are open to addressing the finger streets and keeping it as it is, or at least limiting parking to one side of each of those finger streets.
Councilmember Pounds.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So yeah, I think we're getting out over our skis here personally. You know, we've got some pretty good lockdown on parking right now. I think I would agree with councilmember Moy. This incremental action to me feels much better. I'm, I'm okay with opening up ocean side of Palm. I think that makes sense. But all this other is just going to increase, you know, what we fought pretty hard to keep down the traffic. I mean, the COVID cases are significantly down in the Charleston County area over the last two to three weeks. Is it because of our parking ban? Who knows? I mean, it's a lot of things working towards it, but I don't think we can argue with the success of the reduction of the cases in Charleston County over the last two to three weeks. And for us just to rip the Band-Aid off and open up Palm from forty second to fifty seventh makes no sense to me to open up the municipal lots a hundred percent. Doesn't make sense to me. I, I think we need to do some incremental steps to get us down this path and see how it goes for the next thirty days and then revisit it personally.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is break it up into the ocean side of Palm. I'm going to break it up from the finger streets and third to ninth. Break it up from forty second to fifty seventh and break it up to the municipal parking lots. That's four different sections. Does that seem like what we're talking about?
Well, those seem to be the issues that you all brought up, except that Hartnett's still a part of it. So if you're going to break everything up.
Okay, is Hartnett's here from twenty seven to twenty nine?
We should get them all.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just, I mean, just to make sure you touched all of them. I think that's.
We have a motion and a second on the table, so we'd have to address that before they separated into separate motion.
I'll withdraw my amendment.
Well, and councilmember Ward, can you want to withdraw your own amendment?
Yes, I will. I will withdraw.
Councilmember Buchanan, you seconded that. Okay.
Okay, so councilmember Ward, since we're starting with the ocean side of Palm first, do you want to make the amendment?
Make an amendment to open up Palm Boulevard on the ocean side. The parking, keep no parking on the land side.
Okay.
This is just for twenty first to forty first.
Correct. Correct. Section forty.
Fortieth Avenue. That's correct.
No parking between fortieth and forty first.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there actually is no parking between twenty first and twenty second too.
Seconded that?
Yes, I think councilmember Streetman seconded.
Right.
The, the section on the land side of Palm, there's no parking in between twenty first and twenty second. That's correct. But I believe that that would remain no parking.
Right.
Land side. So we're good there.
Member Smith, did you have a question or no?
I just wanted to suggest as we go along the, with each of these pieces that we just mentioned, how many spaces that we are talking about with the sections. So I know that for Palm Boulevard, there are three hundred and fifty seven spaces from twenty first to forty first, but we're talking about allowing half of them. So I guess that's.
Probably open up about sixty percent of those because.
Yeah, so maybe like a hundred and seventy five. I'm sorry. I, I, there was overlap there, but I think that's about a hundred seventy five to two hundred spaces that we would be adding by allowing the ocean side. Well, maybe more like a hundred seventy five to one fifty if we are not allowing at the tail end where there's rut. So anyways, I, I support that. I think Palm Boulevard is, is the best place that we can open up and that we're being reasonable and conservative by opening up one side of the street. But I, I know that that is, I think, the place where we were having good social distancing. It's accessible and that's where people who were hope, our best social distancers, the people from other parts of our community who are looking for a safe place, many of them were really wanted to go to Palm Boulevard parking.
Okay. Is there anybody else discussing? Okay, Nicole, man, we have a roll call for the ocean side of Palm Boulevard.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
I, I.
All in favor of opening parking on the ocean side of Palm Boulevard, twenty first to forty.
Okay. Councilmember Streetman, do you want to make a motion concerning the finger streets from third to ninth avenue?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we continue with no parking on the finger streets, uh, third through ninth.
I'll second.
Who seconded it?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to say a couple of things on that. We have a beachfront management act that. Yes, sir. Councilmember Buchanan, go ahead, please.
I was just going to try and make an amendment to that and allow parking at least on one half of, on one side of the street of those finger streets.
I'm, I'm sorry, my computer is freezing. So Ryan, would you repeat that for my sake?
I said I would, I'd like to make an amendment to allow parking on, on at least one side of those streets to continue to, to spread out folks throughout the beach.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This, and this is an amendment to this. Do we have any discussion on the amendment?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just a question, Brian's amendment. How do, how do you determine which side of the street we're doing that? Like, you know, I, I do understand the overall problem, but I don't understand how we go about it.
Well, we, we take up the signs off one side of the street.
Well, I, I, I realize that physically, but you know, you've got to make a determination as to which side of the street. And it, you know, plays to one resident or another resident, depending on which side of the street. I, you know, it seems to me we either limit it or we don't limit it. To avoid, you know, some future conflict with the residents.
Right, yeah. And see, that's the problem that we're running into here with politics is there's no compromise. It's either I gotta be always all or none. And, you know, I think was where our compromise comes in is where you get the most effective change. And I think that's all I did. We can evaluate those sides and we can have the chief police or, you know, decide, you know, whatever, or the police department. It's a matter. I just made an amendment to try to help spread and that's what we're trying to do is to cause the island in parking to spread out instead of be congested in just the one spot.
Councilmember Smith.
Um, I've, I've never really heard a rationale for not including the finger streets from third through ninth. And so if somebody could speak to why we would consider that, I'd like to hear that argument.
I would like to add one comment to that. Third, third, ninth avenue, there are approximately sixty one plus or minus spaces. That's what we're talking about. So we're not talking about a whole lot of cars down here. It's a long stretch of beach that's pretty a beach, for lack of a better term. So one side of the street versus another side of the street, sixty one cars, I don't know how many people in the car, just call it four people. So, you know, two hundred and forty people is probably what your maximum is going to be. But so, and you know, if you look at Sullivan's Island and Folly Beach, they allow beach parking from front beach to back beach on one side of the street island wide. So just, I mean, I'm trying to give Ryan some, some help there with the, how they do it, how they decide which side gets to park and which side doesn't. But I look at it as there's not that many cars down there we're talking about. Yes, sir. Councilmember Streetman.
Uh, yeah, I think ninth avenue, eighth avenue and fourth avenue already are one side, from what I understand. So we're really talking about third, number three, five, six and seven that are both sides at this point.
And I would, I would, I'll consult with the fire department on that because on Sullivan's Island, the way they have it set up is most routes that the fire department has planned to take to go to calls, it usually goes one way and those, there is not parking allowed on that side of the street where the, where usually most fire routes are.
Can I bring in Mr. Richard Hathaway on this question?
Does that make sense, Hath?
Yeah, it, it does. It's also, you know, where your hydrants are and all that is affected as well. So.
Okay, we have a, any other discussion?
Jimmy, just quick comment. Just a reminder that Sullivan's Island has keep it moving, right? So for me, the comparisons, you know, we're having the Sullivan's Island on Palms because of their restrictions and what we're talking about is an emergency restriction, not a permanent change. So frankly, I'd be remiss to not mention that Sullivan's Island is and remains part of the problem for not opening the beach fully.
Yes, sir. I agree, but Folly Beach is just like all Palms when it comes. So just not trying to nitpick either one. I'm trying to point something out. So Hath, any questions as for one side street versus another?
No, I just think it would have to be looked at and evaluated by street.
Okay. Councilmembers Smith?
Oh, well, just generally, I still haven't heard the rationale for removing any of third through ninth. So I, I do believe that many surfers like that area because it keeps them away from the piers and is a good place to surf and the, and kite surfers. And we are trying to encourage people to, to get outside and be healthy exercising. So there are people who prefer that area for certain reasons and I, I don't see why we would exclude it, really any of it. Because we're trying to promote as much social spread as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so this is the amendment that we're talking about, which is one side of the street. No other discussion.
The side of the street where parking would be available or eliminated would be up to an assessment of the fire police department.
Correct. Okay. Roll call, please, for the amendment.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan. Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
May.
Councilmember Bell.
May.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes six to three.
You forgot about me.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Now it passes six to three.
I apologize, Nick, Kevin, for whatever reason. Okay, um, the next section of the island is forty second to fifty seventh avenue.
Got to go back to.
We got the original amendment. I'm very sorry.
The original motion is to have no parking on third through ninth.
And so we've already exempted that by allowing parking on one side of the street.
I, I mean, we can vote it down because it's a motion on the floor. You just voted down. Is that correct, Julie? Is that the way to clean that up?
No, we just, we just voted amend the original motion, so that we don't have.
But so the vote was to allow parking on one side to determine by the fire department, right?
Yeah, correct.
Any, all right, we're good.
That was the amendment. The original motion was to eliminate all, to, to not allow parking between third and ninth avenue altogether. And then the amendment was to allow just one side, which passed. I guess the original motion as amendment would be just a reiteration of the amendment.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think so either. I think they cancel each other. One of them cancels the other one. Okay.
Totally agree.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to allow parking from forty second to fifty seventh avenue on the non-ocean. Okay, do I hear a motion to allow parking from 42nd to 57th Avenue on the non-ocean side of Palm?
I make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion.
I'll just reiterate that I feel like we need to spread things out as much as possible. The, the speed limit is 35 miles per hour all up and down Palm, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so, I, I'm not sure if I understand the, um, speed limit piece of councilmember Bell's argument. And, um, we need to spread things out.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to help with her understanding of that. There is no beachside parking there, there's nobody scrambling to park there, it's wide open, at least 35 miles an hour. Um, anyone who lives on that end of the island knows that, and I would, I would surmise that it's excessively over 35 miles an hour at most times. And it does create a danger and a problem. And, um, you know, I get to hear from the residents down on this end quite often about the speeding and the problematic, uh, issues associated with it, so.
Okay, anyone else? This, this, remember, this is trying to do it twice per topic, councilmember Smith, this is your second.
Okay, I would just say that, um, you know, that, maybe that's a, an issue that we need to look at, um, in our, as we discuss parking uh, overall within our committees, but for the moment, um, it's been longstanding practice to have parking available there. So, um, I think we should continue.
Nicole, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely, councilmember Pounds?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Nay.
Councilmember Streetman?
Nay.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 4.
Thank you, moving on, um, Hartnett Boulevard from 27th to 29th to be used by residents or recreation, um, users only. Is that correct in our, from before, councilmember Buchanan?
Correct, yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion?
I would, Mr. Mayor, just on that point, um, there has, there have been a lot of folks down there playing basketball, um, that, that spot, Hartnett's been really busy with um, both residents and children out there, so it's, it's, it's been good.
Very good, anyone else?
So, the motion to allow parking on the land side of Palm between 42nd and 57th Avenue, because it is an emergency ordinance, it requires a two-thirds vote for it to pass, and it didn't, so, um, that motion failed.
Okay.
Point of parliament to inquire? What, what was that again?
The motion to allow landside parking on Palm Boulevard between 42nd and 57th Avenue requires to be approved by a supermajority, a two-thirds vote, since it's an emergency ordinance.
Question, so, we're voting on extending it, we're not voting on reversing the 38-day order. So, I don't see how we need the two-thirds vote for that specific piece.
It is part of the emergency ordinance, any, any provision of an emergency ordinance requires the two-thirds vote.
But that was to expire, that was to expire and, on, I mean, the, we're voting on extending an emergency ordinance, not on the existing ordinance, reversing it, in which case, I would think it would require a two-thirds.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
If, if I may, actually, despite my, my vote, I, I, if I, it comes with respect, if you don't mind me trying to restate it.
Yes, please.
Right now, the, the emergency ordinance that we, that we passed previously expires on Sunday.
Correct.
Um, and so, the motion really should not be to open up parking, but rather, the motion should have been um, made by somebody who wanted to extend the emergency ordinance to close the street. In other words, the motion was almost unnecessary because the emergency ordinance is set to expire. I don't, that's, that's the way that I would understand it. But I look to Julia.
Julia, sorry.
No, it's okay, I mean, technically, what we're, what we're discussing is not opening up parking altogether, we're talking about just limiting it, just restricting it to one side of Palm Boulevard, so technically, that would fall into the emergency ordinance. So, if we're going to be adopting an emergency ordinance, restricting just half the parking on Palm, it would still require the two-thirds majority.
Okay, can I, I have a clarification, though, um, we have allowed, um, construction workers from the Wild Dunes, because there really is no parking down there, and we have allowed the Turtle Team to park down there. We're making allowances for these two groups with proper identification. I hate to throw that fly in the...
Yeah, that was my understanding, Mr. Mayor.
That is part of the emergency ordinance, 2011, that it, the, the provision that expires on Sunday. So, that could, that would need to be extended past Sunday if the goal is to make, to keep it, if not...
Motion to do that.
All right, so can we come back and have another motion for the, separately? Yay or nay?
On, on the Turtle Team and Construction?
Construction Workers and Turtle Team.
We just haven't gotten, well, we just haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, we haven't?
Oh, okay.
We're still on...
What, what I want to make sure it's understood is that the motion to, uh, open up landside parking on Palm Boulevard from 42nd to 57th, that motion is fake.
Correct.
So, no action is taken to extend the no parking, then those restrictions would expire on Sunday.
Correct.
And it would open up on Monday, I'm sorry, on Sunday.
Oh, so, we essentially don't need a motion if we want to allow that parking?
Right. Well, we did...
Very, motion to, if, 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 if the will of the group or the majority is to ex, to maintain those restrictions, we would need a motion to extend those restrictions past Sunday.
Okay. Otherwise, they will expire.
On Sunday, correct.
Right.
Okay. So, what's the next item on the agenda?
We're still on parking.
Still on parking, we got, last and not least...
Well, we're still, we got a motion on the floor to vote on Hartnett.
Hartnett, right.
40th?
No, Hartnett, we still have to vote on that.
It's for recreation.
Okay, um, Recreation, 27th to 29th, and Desiree, I would assume this includes, um, the parking on the side street of 27th and 29th Avenue is residential only anyway, correct?
So, 29th is, is not regulated.
Neither is, neither is 27th.
So, should that be included in that motion?
I believe, well, I want to.
As everybody said, whack-a-mole, you put something here and it's going to go over there. Here, none, okay, back to the motion.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we, can we restate it, please, just go ahead and let us know what we're voting over here.
We're sticking with what is in the, um, ordinance, parking on Hartnett Boulevard between 27th and 29th shall be for residential recreation department uses only.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
In favor?
Okay, thank you, now for the fun one, thank municipal parking lots.
I make a, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we open up the lots to capacity.
Thank you, sir, mayor.
Second. Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, I, I think it would be good for us to review, or maybe our city administrator could review, the number of spaces that are available, both the lots, the streets, and also the Isle of Palm's, um, uh, county park lot.
Susan, we've covered, um, all those areas, we're just talking about the front beach parking lot now, commercial lots.
Right, that's what I mean, just the number of spaces in, in the front beach area.
Okay, thank you.
So, in the big lot, we currently have more or less 320 parking spaces. And on the small lot, behind the, um, commercial area, behind the public safety building, we have roughly 102 spaces. Some of those spaces are already unavailable due to the placement of the, uh, temporary trailers for police and fire. Um, so, technically, we'd be opening, you know, half of 320 in the big lot. There's roughly 441 spaces in the county lot, and those are not being restricted in any way, they're open 100%.
And also, the metered parking lot? Spots, 101?
141 more or less, three parking between 10th and 14th.
Okay.
So, to put that in perspective, we have about 1,000 spaces in that, concentrated in that area, including the county lot, and we're talking about adding in, um, well, of those, we're talking about 160 spaces that we're adding back in, I think, essentially. Is that correct? There, there weren't other, I mean, we were, already had probably 750, um, that we're, are using, so we're adding another 160 by going to full capacity.
Give or take, um, again, we got metered is 141, and our lot is 320. And we're, you know, going from 160 to, uh, 320, and we're going all the metered lots on the front. And plus, we have limited parking on that smaller lot, and I think we have two questions, one from councilmember Popson and one from councilmember Bell. Popson, please.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback, councilman Buchanan, um, those businesses, uh, down front beach are hurting. And by, uh, opening up these lots to 100%, it's really going to help their business.
Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, this, I, and, you know, I think one of the problems is we do have a loss of parking due to trailers and other issues. But I do want to make sure that we're on record, this, this is a COVID issue, right? And I've, you know, when, when we hear business is down because of parking, I, I, I just want everyone to be clear, business is down everywhere because of COVID. And, you know, I would have preferred to have a conversation openly with the businesses ahead of time, how much parking do they need for their employees? Could we solve that problem separately? But let's not, you know, continue to accept the blame on this council for business being down. And I absolutely concur with councilmember Moy, you know, a gradual reopening makes sense. And, you know, just, just saying that this parking problem, uh, has caused every issue we have, we have a problem. We have a pandemic still going on, and all of these measures are temporary measures in the effort to get businesses fully open for everybody, not just the Isle of Palm. So, I, you know, we'll vote as we vote, um, but, but, but please, this is a COVID issue.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm a Buchanan.
I'm in, I, I took the opportunity to talk with a lot of the front beach businesses and restaurant, restaurateurs. And their number one complaint, their, their lunch businesses are down because people can't come out and park. Um, their, their dinner service is down, but people can't come out and park. And that's the complaint that they're getting, I mean, they're getting emails, they're getting texts, they're getting, that's what their complaint is. Um, and they noticed it immediately, once it went in. You can look at, go back and look at their numbers, and I encourage you guys to reach out to them, and if you haven't, you should have. And you look at their numbers, and you see where, once this parking implementation went in place, it dropped 20%, 30%, up to 60% revenue. And, um, that's what, that's what they're feeling right now.
I appreciate that.
So, councilmember Ward, and then councilmember Smith?
Just want to concur with councilmember Buchanan, I've talked to him, and, um, they're looking straight in the eye and say, um, you know, they're talking about putting food on the table for their families, and they're saying that it went down. Their businesses dropped dramatically the next day that the parking restrictions went into effect.
Councilmember Smith?
Um, yeah, just to reiterate, we're only talking about increasing the number of spaces by about 15% um, in that area overall, when we look at the overall parking area. But it is, the location of it is more advantageous to people going to the businesses. Um, as opposed to the county park, which is set aside and is not, uh, does, and not, is not conducive to supporting the businesses.
Okay, I'm going to chime in here for a few minutes. Um, number one, those lots are used by everybody, beachgoers, hotelgoers, restaurantgoers, bargoers. So, it's really spread out amongst four different groups of people. Um, and also, I, what I, I reached out to each and every one of them yesterday myself. And one of the things I heard is, you know, the times that we are doing it now, we extended it hours up to 8 o'clock. And they said that really impacted the business tremendously, and they would prefer we go back to, um, ending paid parking at 6:00 PM as opposed to 8:00 PM. And I don't, I, I'd like to make as a friendly amendment to this, um, opening up the lots.
Which is what, exactly?
Um, stop paid parking at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I...
I'll, I'll second that mo, I'll second that amendment, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we treat that as a separate issue, because to me, it's, again, it's, it's on, they're, they're two separate things. Where I, I would, you know, I've spoken already about the 50% versus 100%. The, the, the number of spots is one thing, the whether people are paying after 6 is a different thing. Um, and that's something that I, I would consider supporting, whereas the, the 50% I wouldn't, so, for what it's worth.
Well, let me ask our legal expertise.
Yep.
Julie did hear us?
Julie, you're muted.
Muted.
Sorry about that, and you can withdraw your motion and just bring it up, um, is it a new amendment to the, uh, the prior ordinance, if you'd like?
Who made the motion?
You did.
There's so many, where I, um, I withdraw my motion.
I'll second it, okay.
Okay, going back to the original, is open up the parking lots to 100% and stopping the paid parking after 6:00 PM.
The original motion, open the lot to capacity 100%, that's the original motion.
So, I, so, we did the motion, then what about the 6:00 PM, we just tried to do an amendment to that?
I see another motion, another motion.
I think you withdrew your amendment to deal with the 6:00 PM, uh, paid parking, and councilmember Buchanan withdrew his second. But I think you, I think you, you all want to treat that separately.
Okay, let's go back to the original motion, then, to open up the parking lots to 100%.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Can I, can I say one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Streetman.
Yeah, uh, uh, I mean, generally speaking, I'm, you know, I, I would like to see a slowdown on this and not really open it up 100%. But I have to also say that I'm sensitive to what the businesses are saying. And, uh, and certainly, if we have employees of some of those businesses that are getting ticketed because they don't have spots to park in, I'm, I'm sensitive to that as well. So, it's, uh, uh, you know, even though it kind of flies in the face of what my better judgment might be, uh, I tend to be supportive of, let's, doing all we can do to support those businesses at this time. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Nicole, would you just read the motion so everybody truly is on the same page?
This motion is for opening up the municipal lots to 100% capacity only.
Thank you, okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Nay.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Nay.
Councilmember Pounds?
Nay.
Uh, Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
The motion passes 6 to 3.
Thank you.
That is your majority.
Yes, sir, councilmember Ward?
I'd like to make the motion to change parking lot, I'm in, in meters, charge the meters from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM until October 31st.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, discussion.
It's going to take about, uh, the administrative...
It's gonna take about, the administration, of course, it's gonna take about a week to implement this.
Of course, Desiree?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I spoke with Chief Cornett, indicating that it would take about a week to change the kiosk with the system, T2 system, so just.
Okay. We're agreeable to that?
If it takes, if it takes less than a week, then wonderful, but it's, it's not, just not something that we can do immediately.
Okay, thank you very much, any discussion, any further discussion?
Nicole? The motion is to have paid parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM through October 31st.
Yes, ma'am.
It is this? Go ahead, Desiree.
Just as clarification, does this include all meter parking lot, meter parking, including the municipal parking lot and on-street?
Yes, yep.
All metered parking, okay, so all metered parking is from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM through October 31st with the allowance for the kiosks to be changed.
Right.
All right, Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much, and I believe that ends our change, yes, ma'am?
You still have to deal with 42nd to 57th, or it's all gonna be open, because you have to deal with your groups as well.
I would like, I would like to make a motion to continue to restrict the landward side from 42nd to 57th down.
Except for construction and.
Except for construction and the Turtle Team.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Okay, Desiree?
Just a clarification, the emergency ordinance 202011 had a provision that exempted contractors with proper proof in all, and the other areas where parking was already prohibited. So are we just saying that contractors will be allowed to only park in 42nd and 57th? Or if they, if they need to park on, on Palm Boulevard, on the land side of Palm, would they be able to do so?
I, I, I think that's the intent.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Are we ready, any other discussion?
I got one, just one discussion, I, I just want to clarify if this is about COVID. So people parking to go to the beach are at high risk for COVID, but people parking in the same spot and going to a job site are not. I'd make sure this was really still about COVID.
That's correct.
Just like adding the municipal lot and packing more people downtown? Similar, yeah.
But we also took off half of Palm Boulevard, so we have done some steps to reduce parking on the Isle of Palms due to the spread of COVID-19. It's been painful, I know, but this is something that we had to do individually. Are we ready for a vote on this?
We are voting on restricting the land side of, restricting parking on the land side of Palm Boulevard from 42nd to 57th, allowing for exceptions for construction, contract workers, and the Turtle Team with proper decals.
I think we're ready.
I, I just wanted to point out, for those who aren't familiar, when, when we're talking about doing this, we're removing all parking opportunities on that stretch, because there is no existing parking on the ocean side.
Correct.
Yes, there's a sidewalk. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Nay.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Nay.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Mayor Carroll?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Well, that means, okay, there's no restrictions then.
No restrictions.
It does not require a supermajority.
Well, you failed, failed. I don't think supermajority is required for failing.
It's just, okay.
Okay, I believe that ends all the parking issues that we have on Isle of Palm, yes, ma'am?
There is one thing you guys forgot, it was the date allowed, there was one piece about section five, for allowing the city administrator to take, to cancel or revoke a special event permits issued.
I'm sorry, that wasn't highlighted in red on my sheet, so, my mistake.
No, it's very, it's, the only thing that's highlighted is the blank spot, so that's why.
My mistake. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve for an additional 61 days.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, roll call?
Uh, Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan? Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. You have my consent at all, Desiree?
Hey, you're one thing, um, there are about four additional sections that were not treated. They were, they did not include any red lines, but if it is the will of the group to treat them in one motion, to extend them again for 61 days.
Do you read this course, please?
It is section one, section four, nine and 11. Nine and 11 deal with no live entertainment and after 9:00 PM, and also the restrictions or on indoor occupancy to 50% and extending the state of emergency.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make it a, a motion to change the outdoor entertainment from 9:00 to 10:00. And the reasoning for that is, after talking with some of the businesses, they, when they start, when they start music at 6:00 and 9:00, they have a bunch of people come in, and it's really congested. And they can't stop, I mean, per state law, they have to stop selling alcohol, so there's still people there, but it's really congest or increases the amount of people in one area in a short period of time instead of expanding it over a longer period of time.
Second.
Second, discussion on that.
Right, can, um, that sounds, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Buchanan, that sounds pretty reasonable, can you just give me, grant me this, just to clarify? The state law is that, what time does, does service have to stop?
11 o'clock.
Okay, so you're saying that by music stopping at 9:00 is forcing people inside, but for stopping at 10:00 would not?
Well, no, actually, it, it, it coincides with our sound, with our noise, noise ordinance as well.
It doesn't squeeze them all in together, three hours.
Okay.
Okay. I made that as an amendment.
It's a motion, yeah.
A motion to these.
Section 9. Motion to adjourn, section 9, to extend the music to 10:00 PM.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much, and.
We need to look at the others, we need to, like Desiree asked, we need to look at the other sections, which now remain as number one, number four, and number 11. To offer a change, we can just do those all at one time, that they remain as is.
Just do as one time all as, as they remain.
One, section four, and section 11 is what we're voting.
Motion to approve for an additional 61 days.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do an effective date, and then just assume that it's today, Desiree?
Well, that's what I was, I wanted to ask. I just wanted to go through and restate the changes, and would they go into effect on Monday after the emergency ordinance 202011 expires? The parking restrictions expire on Sunday? Do they, I guess they would become, they would go into effect on Sunday, on Monday? Unless it's immediate, I don't think they should do. Nicole, do you want to go and restate through all those motions related to parking? What have, you know, what changes have been implemented, please?
I will, let me find where parking starts. All right, we have opened the ocean side of Palm Boulevard. Hold on. We separated all these out.
I appreciate everybody's patience on this, this is a difficult thing we're doing.
Okay, I think I'm in my right place, okay, so we're, we've opened parking on the ocean side of Palm Boulevard from 21st to 40th. Um, we have opened up parking on one side of the Finger Streets of 3rd through 9th with this side to be determined by the fire and police departments. We have maintained the no parking, the recreational use parking, excuse me, only from 27th to 29th on Hartnett. We have opened up the municipal lots to 100% capacity. We have, uh, put metered parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM through October 31st. Changed, and that's, that's it for parking, and then we moved the music to 10:00 PM.
Very good.
For contractors and Turtle Team.
No.
We opened up parking.
No.
Part of a.
The motion for 40, for the motion for 47th failed.
Oh, that's correct, so we need to have a motion that, that addresses contractors.
The only place that would.
Not just what we voted on.
No, it failed.
It failed, so it's open, Desiree, I think.
And really, the only place that would apply would be on half of Palm Boulevard. Because we've opened up other parking.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan, do I hear anything?
Well, these would end up back on Sunday, Sunday morning.
Sunday morning get open, that's right.
Sunday morning, perfect.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Section 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 have not been treated.
Section 2.
We did.
Yeah, we did, in the very beginning.
I didn't, I read just the parking ones.
I, I read, I read all the red lines, Desiree, in the beginning.
No, I'm talking about the last page of the ordinance, section 2 penalties, section 3 suspension of contrary laws.
I would have gone forward, okay, section 2 penalties. Any violation of any rule, regulation issued, set forth here and shall be punishable by, provided by title, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. No reason to, suspension.
Section 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved for 61 days.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much, now Ryan, what did you say before?
I think it was a motion to adjourn.
Second. Now we're off record, 11:26.